Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Caving Access. Okay, so Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Okay, so anybody here for citizens input?
Pledge.
Oh, my God, I always remember the pledge, huh, Doc?
Always.
All right, all right. Doc, why don't you lead us?
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess now I can ask about citizens' input. Katie, anybody online anything for us?
No.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, and then so first up then, we have to wait till 7:05 for this? Is this a change, is it a public hearing?
No.
No, so we can get right into it, all right. Awesome, okay, so we have a change of manager application for Red Robin.
Want us to stand here? You're here.
He was fine.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Pisano. I'm from Upton, Conellen, Devlin. On behalf of the Red Robin, with me tonight is John Tracy. He is the proposed manager of record at this location. John is a US citizen Massachusetts resident and is familiar with the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol. He has years and years of experience in the food and beverage industry. He was previously the named liquor license manager at Ken's Restaurant and for the past four years, and then prior to that, he owned his own restaurants in Millis and Holliston. So he has, you know, quite the experience necessary to run the safe service of alcohol and the operations at Red Robin. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. Anybody, any specific questions?
Nothing specific.
No? No, nothing at all, look at this, I think you might have an easy question.
That's great, that's good.
I guess, I guess, I'll just, so I've been a server in the industry for many years. Obviously, you know, we just pass this off to everybody. We take, you know, the serving of alcohol very seriously and whatever, I'm sure, that's, you know that, you've been in the business, you know.
Of course, yes.
And, yeah, so that's a, you know, welcome.
Well, thank you.
We're happy, happy to have you.
It's great to be here, I'm glad to be part of Red Robin.
Yeah, do you, you want to tell us, I know, I know that attorney gave us a little bit about you, you want, anything you would like to ask us, or you want to tell us about yourself?
I've been doing this my whole career. Like Libby said, I came from Ken's Steakhouse, which is iconic, as you maybe well know. Moving on to Red Robin, before that, I did own my own two restaurants in Millis and Holliston. Unfortunately, lost that due to COVID, so moving on, but, you know, it's all good. So, yeah, I've been doing this, I was with Davio's before that, so it's been a long established career, so.
Sure, Davio's here in Foxborough, or one of the other?
My restaurant was actually in Providence, in Athasunesta.
Nice, okay.
So, yeah, it's, I have a little bit of experience in all facets. Certainly all serving alcohol and all serious about, about the responsible service.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
You know, something I will tell you, we've been, we've been very lucky, there's very little, at least since I've been on the board and even a little bit before that. There was an establishment years ago in town that we had lots of, lots of issues with, but, yeah, and that's why we just, we mention it, you know, but, of course, that's something.
They're surely out there.
Exactly, exactly. Great, I guess we can.
One, just quick thought, you know, you do know there's a new organization in town and down there about the group of alcohol servers, Fox Cares? No, the?
You talk about Business Club?
Yeah, yeah.
Fox Cares, is that still active?
Oh, I don't know.
They were trying to get it back together. It's Tom from Tavallina who spearheads that, so I can, I'll send you his information.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard the term, but I'm certainly open to.
Didn't know they went to funk, there was a group.
It was probably a COVID thing, you know, they kind of.
It was just a group of people like yourselves, all down Patriots Place, that try to get together and, you know, come up with.
Oh, I would be open for that, for sure.
All right, well, we'll see if it's still going then.
Do you live locally?
I live in Milford, about a half hour away.
Milford, okay, good. When were you at Davio's in Providence?
Oh, 2000, probably 2000 or 2006.
Okay.
Thereabouts, yeah.
Good. Yeah, I've been there many times, it's like, it's a great.
In Providence?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
A lot of people go to Boston, but that's really a great location.
Yeah, it was, not there anymore, he sold that location. Those are back in the Buddy Cianci days, if you remember that, so he was a regular customer. A lot of interesting stories.
Right, yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I can pay our notes, maybe.
Maybe so.
Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Make a motion to change manager of Red Robin.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you over there, I hope.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll be there.
Red Robin girl?
The kids are, oh, good. Shouldn't say it like that.
Okay, so, all right, public hearing, we can't, so we have to skip over that, we have to wait till 7:15?
Yeah.
I could do the land at the rear 34th Park School Street.
All right, sounds like a plan.
Although that won't take much time, but, so, as you know, you've already voted to authorize us to move forward, and we're about ready to proceed with putting the bid out, the request for bids out. But one thing that Brandon brought to our attention is that we might want to make sure that there's a minimum bid, and when we say that, we don't mean any sort of major bid, but we have incurred some legal costs and some advertising costs, so we're recommending a minimum bid of $1,000, just to ensure that the town doesn't come out in the negative with respect to that. Or, it's up to you if you don't want to do that, but just with the understanding that our costs will be approaching $1,000 to do this, and we might want to just keep it revenue neutral in that regard. So, prior to putting such a minimum bid in the bid, we would need the Select Board's authorization.
What's the assessed value of the property?
I mean, obviously you could go higher, but as we know, the goal is to get the property off the tax roll, so we didn't want to make it prohibitive, we just wanted to not maybe lose money off it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great idea, for no other reason than it'll cover our costs.
Yeah. Exactly.
Sounds fair.
And I think, I think also, also, I don't think we're going to have a bidding war or anything for it.
Probably not.
So, yeah, and that, that just, you know, that'll not only get it off, off the books for us, but if someone is interested, you know, it, it will be a nice, it'll be a good deal for them. And it'll help them, help us, everybody will be happy in the end. No, sounds good, so Paige, did you want us to take a, take a vote?
Take a motion, yes, please.
Can I just make a motion and take a vote?
Anyone to go with the thousand you thought was reasonable, everybody agree?
Yeah, yes.
Motion to set a, set an amount of $1,000 as a minimum bid amount in the invitation for bid IFB to sell property 34 School Street, assessors map 79 parcel 16.1.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to skip and do a couple of action items?
Sure.
All right.
Approve, motion to approve a memorial bench to honor Grace K. Lynch.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Accept a donation in the amount of $1,200 for the memorial bench to honor Grace K. Lynch.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Select Board meeting minutes from December 17th, 2024.
Second.
All those, sorry, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Do a little managers update.
Do we, do we take some, do we take some of the, some of the action items off?
Yeah, they're all done.
Catherine from, from the.
Yes, apologies, that was a town manager appointment, so I did delete that one.
No worries, you got it, okay. All right. Do we want to do, did you want to do, well, we only have about four minutes. Can you do your update page in four minutes?
We should probably wait, but if you wanted to, we could do the Jay Barrows discussion.
Oh, that would be, yeah.
That'd probably take about four minutes.
Absolutely.
So Stephanie and I were lamenting the missed opportunity, we probably should have done this before he retired, although I did convey our appreciation to him prior to his retirement. But one idea we had thought about is recognizing him at an upcoming meeting, perhaps inviting the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative and just, you know, really just having a moment where the public could see our appreciation for Jay Barrows, so, again, probably should have done it beforehand, but he was pretty busy, and he said he's staying around town, he's still working, you know, and he's going to be remaining with Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, so if the board thought that was a good idea, we could go ahead and plan something.
Yeah, Paige ran into him and kind of, you know, apologized for our blunder, and, you know, my dad was about to pass, Paige had just lost her, like, it was a lot of stuff going on, matter of fact, that's why I didn't go to his party for, for that reason, so, you know, I, I think he knows how much we appreciate him here in Foxborough, so, but, you know, I think Paige brought up a great idea, it still would, even though he's all done, it'd still be nice to have him come back for a night, so, you know, we'll, we'll come up with, we'll come up with a good plan. Okay. Anybody else, anything?
I get nothing.
All right, okay, so.
Bob, is your first, second two items, public hearings, or is it only the mail-in?
Just the first one.
So do you want to start, maybe he could do his, go out of order?
We can do that.
So the state changed the election laws in 2022, one of which was making it the requirement of the Select Board to detail the police officers. In the past, it was just up to the Chief of Police to handle that, so each year, we're required to come before the Board and have you detail the offices, and what we've done in the past is you just authorize the Chief of Police to provide enough police protection for the elections. And for the big election in November, we had a whole task force, we, many of the department heads met and planned public safety around that event, so I'm just asking you for to do that again. The only election this year so far is the town election, so I'd ask you to designate the Chief of Police as the detail officer for the election.
Motion to approve the town clerk to.
Oh, I'm sorry, so excuse me, so, no, and bringing that up, so, so, so the motion should be to approve the Chief of Police, not the town clerk, correct?
Yes.
Because the motion has town clerk in there.
Yeah, just me to talk about it, I think, with the motion.
But the motion, I think we should say Chief of Police.
Chief of Police, correct.
Motion to approve the Chief of Police to authorize one police officer for 2025 elections.
It should be one.
It actually should be as many as he feels appropriate.
So just authorize police officers?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the police chief to authorize police officers for 2025 elections.
Does that cover it, Bob?
Yeah, it does, yeah, thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do we want to get into the first one now, or?
Officially, we got two more minutes.
Okay, then we'll go, we'll go on to the town elections. So town election nomination process will begin on January 21st, which is a Tuesday after the holiday. Papers will be available. Anyone interested can come in and take out papers, and we'll have until March 17th, which is the Monday, 5 o'clock, to return papers. So it's a good couple month period to, for people to take out papers and get the signatures necessary, so just about every position is open. A selectman will have two, library will have two, school committee will have two. So hopefully, there's interest in people coming out, and it seems like every other year, we've had no contests, and we'd like to see that change, but, so that'll start. Any questions on that, or?
No, pretty clear forward.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be working with Mara to get information out on the website. We've already got her some information, but before the 17th, we'll have all of that available.
There's no action for it.
No, just, just information. I got 7:15 on the nose, are we good?
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to open the public hearings.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, so another change that the legislature made in 2022 was to put in early voting by mail as a permanent solution for the state, not only for the state and federal elections, but also for the town elections, so we have not done that since that went into effect. Each year, I've come before the Board and asked that, we opt out of that process, that's allowed under the statute. And my reasoning is that, especially for the bigger elections like last year, if, where we had mail-in requests for the presidential primary before the annual town election, we had approximately 4,000 of those, we would have been required to mail out 4,000 town ballots in years where you have no one running, we'd be wasting a lot of money. Last year, we did have people come and ask you not to do that, their reasoning being that they would not, you know, if they did not feel safe going to the polls or couldn't get there, they thought they would not be able to vote. But also, in the change after the pandemic, the absentee rules changed a little bit. In other words, we, at least in Foxborough, I consider if you are afraid of getting sick or any issues that would prevent you from getting to the polls, we offer you the right to vote absentee, so that still stands, in my opinion, and even for the presidential election, we had approximately 100 people use absentee as opposed to early voting, or by mail voting.
That's all, just 100?
Yeah, well, we had 4,000 by mail votes, we had another 2,000 approximate come in person and vote during the impersonal voting, so, but for the state primary in September, we had nobody use that, really, it was very limited. So, the absent, I think the absentee ballot process still provides people the safety net they need, and on a good election, we're getting 2,000 people vote, so to send out thousands of ballots that won't get returned, I think is foolhardy and it's not good use of town money.
Right, if you're. So, I mean, one of the things, if you follow on the national news, they were talking about how much it was costing, costing the country in general for mailing out that, and it was a mind-staggering number, so I think if we have a process that's working, you know, we do enough mailings in this town for different things that, that, you know, don't have this type of a process in place that, you know, we have to do. So I think if this is working, and, you know, we're literally not getting anybody who is not saying that they can't do it, I know, I remember the, the commentation, you know, comments that were made by the, the couple last time, but theirs was more a concern of a legal right to do what we were doing type of thing, but if you're comfortable with it, and if we haven't had a complaint through the Attorney General's Office or anything else like that, I think we stick with what we've done, to my opinion.
Yeah, we, I mean, we did take, we did take a little backlash, and, you know, you know, and most people know how I am, I'm a little, little, I'm not cheap at all, but I'm frugal, and, you know, and any money that the town spends, they don't have to, and I know those words came back, somebody came in next meeting and, you know, and I, there's a difference with, with spending town money wisely, if we thought we were taking anybody's right away to vote, no, I don't think anybody sitting on this board would ever, would ever think that, and, and I, I think what Bill said, it's working, and, and the other thing too is Bob's office, whether you specifically have to do this or not, has always been very open, if anybody doesn't know how to get on a computer, doesn't, doesn't, you know, and I know you mentioned it last year, it's a phone call.
Yeah.
You know, you know, we still are a small town, you know, we're, we, we do our best to, to take care of the residents, and Bob's office does a fabulous job of doing that, and, you know, with Claudine here and stuff, you guys are great, you know, so if anybody needs, needs anything or any help with being able to maneuver through that process, they're there for that, so I just want to add that because I know we did take a little bit of backlash last year. Dennis, you have, you have something?
Just a couple of things, I voted against this last year, I don't know if you remember that or not.
I do, yeah.
Probably do. Have you had any feedback to you or your office about the lack of mailing?
Well, a few of the people that were here and made the comments the night of the meeting, they followed up with me, and they did request absentee ballots, and they got absentee ballots, so it wasn't an issue.
Right.
I think it's maybe a misunderstanding of how the process works, and the absentee ballot process, you're supposed to have a reason, but we don't ask reasons, we're not supposed to be getting into people's business, you know, if they say they're not going to be around, or they don't feel comfortable, then they're going to get an absentee ballot. You know, we're supposed to be encouraging voting, not discouraging voting, and I don't discourage voting, so through the absentee process, it works through our office, I don't know how every other office does it, I'm only concerned about how we do it here in Foxborough, so, you know.
And this is something, so, so you're going to come before us every year, or whoever sits, whoever's sitting here, so if.
Yeah.
Or if we find the process is flawed in any way, moving forward, it can.
It can be changed.
It can be changed, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think when I first came in, my thought was to just do away with it, but the Board was like, we'll do it this year, and that's why I had no problem coming every year and requesting it. I think it's fair to have the current Board vote on it every year, so.
Have faith, Robert, have faith you'll do the right thing.
Thank you.
I think the other thing I was going to bring up, I do think the budget this year is going to be more challenging. That's, that's a reason for really.
Yeah, yeah.
On my, my own behalf, to rethink this, this year.
Yeah, last year would have been the big problem because we, I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six thousand applications, so that would have been a big expense. Now, the state is reimbursing the state and federal elections, but, and they've started to give some reimbursement on some of the state, on the town stuff, but there's no guarantee they're going to have the money to, to do that either, so I, I think from the, you know, the budget process, I think it's best to go in this direction because it works, as Bill said, so.
You know, a lot, a lot of people, sometimes they just sign up for it, and they still come to the polls, you know, I mean, I know.
Well, we had a lot of that, and they, we had a lot who would sign up for the ballot, we'd send it to them, and they'd come to the in-person early voting, so, you know, we had probably 100 of those people, so there's money that you've spent and our time doing it, so.
I think you've made, you've made your, made your case, anybody else have any questions for Bob?
No.
Okay, we'll take a motion.
To close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Have to take the vote, right?
Right.
So how would you word it?
Right.
Opt out?
Yeah.
To what, opt out?
Opt out of a by mail voting for the annual town election.
Make a motion to opt out of the mailing town.
By mail voting for the annual town election.
For the annual town election.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Have a good night.
Okay, so we're good, let's see. Is Marie hopping on?
She's right.
Oh, Marie!
Hiding behind.
I'm hiding.
Hey, I saw Brandon, you know something, I wasn't sure if you already, were already out on leave, so that, that's why I wasn't positive that we're going to see you on the screen. Sure, come on, come on up.
Clicker, yeah. Thankfully, Marie is not yet on leave.
Right, Brandon? We're both happy that Marie's still here.
No, I can't hide it anymore.
No.
It's okay.
Listen, girl, you still look pretty good, so, believe me.
So just to set the stage, you know, we thought, we all know that the term free cash is a term that causes a little controversy, you know, in, in communities and a little confusion, so we thought it'd be prudent to have Marie and Brandon come in, kind of walk through the free cash philosophy in town and sort of where we are, and so this is for, you know, the residents at home, but also for the, the Board to have a full understanding of how we, you know, how we operate with respect to free cash and, and sort of the limitations around it.
So I'll get right into it, so the agenda here, so we'll go over what is free cash, go over the 10-year history, what the balance, certified balance was as of July 1st of last year, a review of our updated policies, looking at the free cash usage in the current budget, what drove the certified free cash, and looking at the upcoming needs that have been identified in the FY '26 budget process. So what is free cash? So free cash is essentially, it's your unappropriated fund balance, and it's a factor in every budget cycle. The Department of Revenue certifies your free cash every year at, once you close your books. The calculation is not as simple as just, okay, you had this much of surplus revenues, you had this much in unspent budgets, your fund balance is, it's a running balance, so from the day that the town collected their first dollar, that fund balance, you know, was started back then, and so there is, you know, surplus revenue that goes into it, there's budget turnbacks, obviously what you leave unspent from the year before is essentially the beginning balance, and then there are deductions on the other end of it, so if you have any outstanding property taxes, the state will deduct that from your free cash. Any account deficits, if you have a grant that you didn't receive a reimbursement for, or any police and fire details that are not paid, the state allows you to recognize any revenue up to September 30th, so even though the fiscal year end is June 30th, you have three more months to collect revenue on these grants and police and fire details.
Quick question, it's might be a silly question, but not, having really been in any other town doing this, is free cash just a term we use here in Foxborough? Or is it, it's a state term?
State term.
Okay, so everybody uses that same term?
I wish they would call it something else.
Right, that's.
People think it's free, but it's not.
Right, yeah, yeah, all right, thank you.
It's literally your fund balance, it's not committed for something else.
But it's a universal, sure.
So there are obviously, you know, some risks and challenges with free cash, using free cash to pay for salaries and recurring expenses, it can create, you know, several financial risks and challenges. Free cash is a one-time revenue source, you know, relying on that for ongoing expenses can result in budget shortfalls in the future years. There's, so salaries and recurring expenses should ideally be covered by stable. There's, um, so salaries and recurring expenses should ideally be covered by stable recurring revenue sources like property taxes and state aid. Using free cash disrupts stability. When it comes to financial planning, um, constant reliance on free cash hinders your long-term financial planning. It also masks, um, you know, any, you know, budget issues, making it harder to assess the true financial health of the town. There's also an impact on services. So free cash, free cash can actually be a negative amount. And also if, if it is depleted, it may necessitate cuts to services or layoffs, um, in the future. And then on the other end too, there's a potential for increased taxes. So if your ongoing expenses outpace your ongoing revenues, um, you might have to increase taxes or fees in order to, um, cover these gaps. And I found a quote online, which I thought was perfect for this. So to put it in other words, um, paying your, um, year-to-year expenses with free cash would be like paying your mortgage or your rent with, with your tax refund. It's kind of similar.
Marie, is, um, having worked in both the governmental and not-for-profit sector, is free cash any different than net income in the not-for-profit sector in general?
It's, it's kind of, um-
I mean, I would look at it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of hard to compare that to something on the private, um, sector, but essentially it's, because your fund balance really is your, the result of your operations.
Right.
So this is a component of your fund balance. So I would say fund balance is more like your net income. This is just what's available from that fund balance that isn't already committed to something else. So this is a 10-year history of free cash and you'll see that, you know, it, free cash in 2016, um, was down. You'll see in 2018, there was a major spike. That was a planned, um, increase to the free cash. That was when, um, the money was used to kick off the, the Burrell School Project. So interestingly enough, um, the free cash in 2018 was 8.3 million, which is what we also ended up with at the end of, or for fiscal year 25. And you'll see in, you know, 2020 through 2022, that was during the pandemic where we had to use a lot of free cash just to keep us going. Let's see, what else? So, um, for the same time period, um, so the average free cash certified was 5.8 million. And the average unused at the, for the same 10 years was 2.5 million dollars. This is a graph just showing the comparisons of our surrounding communities. So Foxborough, um, has the fourth highest, um, free cash, um, as of July 1st of last year. Stowen hasn't had their free cash certified yet, so that's why they're at zero, but last year they had a 4.9 million dollar free cash. So this is our, um, policy, which was revised back in September. So the town targets a free cash balance of 3% to 5% of the current year's budget. The policy does get into, um, how free cash is considered a one-time source of funds that should be applied to one-time uses. We do use it on the operating budget, but it's restricted to just the debt service for the town hall and the Burrell projects. So we're not using it for salaries or other operating expenses. It can be used to fund long-term liabilities, replenish, um, reserve funds, um, to appropriate into stabilization funds and the big item, which is, um, you know, funding our capital budget.
Marie?
Yeah.
Going back, you, you don't even have to flick, flick, flick back, but the screen before, when you showed the towns, I don't, you know, not that I'm paying attention to every town's free cash, but now that 14 million, like say for Walpole, so every town can decide what they want their free cash number to be roughly, like percentage-wise of their budget, or is that, that 3 to 5?
That's what they, was actually certified as their free cash.
And I think that's the mistake that a lot of people make. First of all, it's, you could literally deplete this every single year and you wouldn't come back to $8 million because you've depleted the balances. Walpole's a larger community than we are, so they've had some fluctuations, but I, I would say if you looked at their last 10 years, you'd see a similar probably path to ours where it goes up and down, up and down. So who knows what their last year is? You look at the smaller towns like Norfolk and Plainville, you know, quite honestly comparable to our budget, that makes a lot of sense too. So, you know, we're in a line. But I think the, the big mistake everybody makes on free cash is like it's every year we got eight mil, like a new $8 million.
Yeah.
That's not the case. It's, it's, some of it's new because we didn't spend it in a budget, some of it's new because we had some revenue that, that we didn't project would actually happen or came in at a higher number. And some of it, to your, to your point originally, was that we carried the money forward. So if, if we spend it all the way down, you're not going to have an $8 million number, number next year and you're not going to have, don't forget, we've always spent a good portion of this, as Marie just pointed out, on CIP. We wouldn't be able to fund our CIP at all-
Yeah.
-if we didn't have free cash. I mean, we know that we can barely, you know, we're, our regular resources aren't quite covering our, our, our normal operating expenses.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to look up Walpole, um, you know, they were down around 6 million, 6 million, 5 million, 5 million, and then they jumped up to 9 and then 10, so, and now the 14. So they have, to Bill's point, they have fluctuated and they must have just had a year, you know, whether they're hoarding it for a certain reason or whether they got an anticipated revenue.
Maybe they have a project coming, coming, or-
Yeah.
I just, it was just funny.
They may have sold something, who knows?
Yeah, I just thought to myself, I was just kind of like, oh my God, 14, you know, I was trying to-
Yeah.
Think, think of that 3% to 5% of budget type of, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
I also think their taxes, the three above us, their taxes are higher than ours.
Oh, yeah.
So, on residence, so.
Um, so the, the policy that was revised back in September also states that as we approach the full funding of our long-term obligations, the plan is to diminish or eliminate the use of free cash entirely in the operating budget. And then the other piece too is if the town finds itself in the position that it, we, like I said, we, we're currently in the position where we use free cash and overly surplus to pay for that debt service. The goal is to incrementally, incrementally reduce the use of those two sources as the budget allows. And then finally, um, the one piece that was added to the policy was that, um, we will target to leave a free cash balance of 2 million at the end of each year, so that we were not spending it down to the penny. And these policies essentially, I mean, when, when you go to issue bonds, which we, we will be in May of next, or we're already in 2025, in May of this year, um, they look to see that you have policies such as these, where you're restricting one-time revenue sources to one-time uses. This here, this little graphic there is showing you, um, so our current general fund budget is 87 million, 472, 399. The free cash that was certified last July was 8 million, 326, 801, which is 9 and 1/2%. I understand it's well above the target of range of 3% to 5%. But I will get into the reasons for that in a little bit. This is our, so our current budget, um, we used 685,000 towards the debt service. The annual town meeting of last year approved 2.9 million for capital and the special town meeting, um, from November approved an additional 363,000, 965 for capital. So, so far in the current budget, um, we've used 3.9 million, um, towards, well, we've used 3.9 million. And of that, so the 685,000, the 2.9 million, because those were votes that occurred prior to July 1st, those amounts actually came from last year's free cash. So out of the 8.3 million, only the 363,300, 363,000, um, is what's come out of it so far.
Which again, if you think about what Marie just said on the 3% to 5%, if you spend 400,000 between your CIP and your small operating thing and you're trying to keep 2 million, you have to have 6 million just to make that work. And one of the things the town's been in, in trouble with over, prior to the last couple of years, the last couple of years CIP has been pretty healthy as far as what we've been able to do. But prior to that, there's been a lot of decisions on cutting out DPW equipment, um, you know, shuffling between departments, different things that, you know, requests that were made, uh, to not be able to do them because we didn't have enough money, uh, to make that all work. So, um, the one problem with any business is if you don't keep your assets up, um, you eventually could dig a, a deeper hole. And that's exactly what we ended up doing the last couple of years. We put a lot of money into a lot of equipment that's, that was aging, um, falling apart, not usable. And if we didn't have the free cash levels we had, we couldn't have done it.
And I think, Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, but a big part of the reason what Bill just said is the ARPA funds supplemented it. You know, I remember when I was first here, you know, CIP was a challenge. You couldn't get a lot through it.
Million and 1/2, 2 million was like, oof.
Right, so, um, the ARPA loosened it up and that, that has allowed us to catch up a bit, but, you know, ARPA's gone now. So we're, we're going to get back to reality very soon.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think, um, I think that year that we spent all that ARPA money, I was the, the rep from, from the board on CIP. And it was, you know, the, you know, I've watched the CIP meeting and it was, instead of like really sitting and everyone, like, I think we came in and Bill said, "I can't believe I'm going to say this to you guys, but everything on this list, we can fund." So we didn't, it was, it was a very quick meeting. We didn't have to necessarily go and raid each thing. And, um, and I remember, like Bill said, a lot of equipment. There were a lot of trucks and stuff that just, you know, had been pushed back, you know, year and year, because you've sat on CIP for a long time.
And the secondary problem to that though is that the, what we've seen since COVID is that the cost of everything, buses used to cost us 89,000 are now costing us 130, 140,000. Dump trucks used to be, you know, 120,000 and are now close to 200 and something thousand dollars. So this, this is such an important item for us to have to keep the town running, um, as a source of revenue and our source of, of funds to use, that we can't, if we allow this to become part of our capital budget, uh, being part of our operating budget, again, we would be, we'd be stuck in a big way.
Yeah. And this year, um, I mean, for the last two years, uh, because the ARPA money was in the FY22 and 23 budgets. In last year's budget, there was only one item that, everything else was approved, there was just one item, which was the, the trackless municipal tractor, which was deferred, but everything else, um, we were able to pay for using, you know, free cash and some other revenue sources. But 26 will, will revert back to, um, where the CIP committee will have to, you know, make some, um, decisions and, you know, what they truly want to support, because the, the money's not there anymore. And I'll get into that as well shortly. So, um, so what's driving that 8.3 million dollars? So, um, I don't know if you recall from the financial summit, um, where I talked about taxes and state aid. So when you budget for your local receipts, um, I mean, one, you have to be conservative because you do, one of the reasons being that, um, your taxes and state aid are never, never coming at 100%. You're not going to have 100% of your tax bills collected, um, in time, by June 30th. The state, although they'll tell you, okay, you're going to get 12 million on your cherry sheet, in reality, last year, um, we were short by 364,000 dollars on state aid and tax collections were short by 393,000 dollars. So this, um, 757,000 dollar deficit had to be covered via surplus in our local receipt collections. In addition to that, um, in local receipts, you had, um, investment earnings, which were 1.2 million above, um, our projections. You had Walnut Street and Hobby Lobby building permits of 700,000 dollars there, the apparatus repair fees, which belonged to the fire department. And then any concerts and events that were above the 6 that we included in our projections, that was about 788,000 dollars. So when you take the 16.1 million dollars in local receipts that we collected and adjust for all of these one-time revenue sources, your actual collections are closer to 13 million. And that's where, um, the surplus is then used for this capital budget, avoiding the need for us to look for additional tax revenue to cover this. And then, um, we also did have vacancies in multiple town departments, um, on the expense side, there was 1.8 million dollars, um, in unspent budgets. You had vacancies in town manager, finance, police, DPW, health and land use. We also had savings due to grant funding. So, um, we had a grant that paid for permidize, which is our permitting system. Police also had a domestic violence, um, grant, which paid for 15% of the salary of three officers. And they also had, um, various, um, IOD reimbursements. The schools closed out 341,000 dollars and group insurance had a surplus of about 400,000 dollars, um, which includes, we tend to include, um, when we budget for health insurance, we have enough in there to cover essentially, um, 10, the movement of 10 employees. To say if, if an employee goes from a, an individual plan to a family plan, or say we had a new hire, we leave enough in there to cover 10 of these changes in each year.
And an employee every year who has not chosen to take health insurance can elect to now take it, which is after the fact that the budget's done. So, um, another issue, it's not just a matter of if they've changed from a single to a family, but they didn't have any and they decide to come on.
And the, I mean, the family plan costs the town easily 25,000 dollars, so it's good to have. Definitely don't want to end up with a deficit in this budget. So we get into, um, so the upcoming needs. So you start out with that 8 million, 326. You deduct the 363 that was appropriated at the special town meeting. There was also 350,000 dollars that was appropriated as a transfer to the fire stabilization fund. We will need, um, and this might be the first time you're, um, hearing this, um, but we had a meeting, um, yesterday regarding the community center. And what has come up is that there, um, there's the need for additional funding to cover, um, the connection to the sewer, um, the elevator, um, and other things that have just come in, um, over budget. So we'll need to have a special town meeting. That's, I, I would say probably Feb, like February, early March.
In February, early March.
So we'll need 650,000 dollars there just to cover all of those items, um, minus the 2 million dollar retard, the recharges that we aim to leave at the end. So that leaves you with 4 million, 962, 836. So of that, we're using 665,000 for the operating budget. The total CIP requests that have been submitted to us are 4 million, 979, 379, and those are off to the right side. We're looking to, um, put some more money into the general stabilization fund, um, put some more money into the fire stabilization fund. For the first time in a few years, putting some money into the capital stabilization fund, and this is in anticipation of, um, or preparation for the Taylor School Project. And then the last item on there is, um, this is something that's completely new. So when we were going through the budget process, um, the schools identified, um, the need for this 950,000 dollars to, which essentially covers the out-of-district tuition for, um, two special needs students. I believe it might be more than two, there's-
Well, two, but two make up over 700,000 of it.
So what we're doing here, this is essentially a, a one-time cost on, that we have, we have to pay for it in year one. The only practical source here outside of keeping it in the operating budget is to use free cash. By doing it this way, um, if we were to keep this in the operating budget, I mean, it would result in a ton of layoffs. We would not be able to balance the budget. So- So our thought was to, because this is a cost that we have to pay for in year one, let's use free cash, take care of it. And then in year two and three, I believe the circuit breaker, which is a state fund kicks in. So that's something new for this year. So when you take the four point nine million that that's available, the total needs are seven point one nine million, leaving us with a shortfall of about two point two million. So this is where the CIP committee will need to make decisions on, you know, the various projects that people requested funding for.
So what's the percentage for that circuit breaker?
So circuit breaker, at this point, you're getting about seventy five percent back. The the issue really comes out to if they if they hadn't had any major changes in their out of district tuitions, which is a good sized number to start with, they wouldn't have needed this. But with these two that are ones that move in, one's an existing child that's going to need some additional, significantly additional services. And then I think there's three or four other children that that make up the the total. You, you know, you'll get about seventy five percent back and they have a potential for getting a little bit more back for this year, which would help them to mitigate part of that cost in the future. But those are, those, the circuit breaker kicks in the year, you get it the year after the event.
You've spent.
So you don't get that in FY twenty six, you get it in FY twenty seven. And that's why what Marie is saying is you needed to fund it for the first year. Again, in a typical year, would we have one student more or one student less or a couple of students more, a couple of, in the more moderate price programs that the schools could absorb? Yes. But when you have, you know, literally two children making up over seven hundred thousand dollars in one year, it's a hard fix.
And that fund, the sped stabilization fund, in order for the schools to tap into that, it requires both the school committee and a select board vote. And so we would only, say if they don't end up needing the entire nine hundred fifty thousand, we would, you would only approve what they need. The rest would just sit there because, I mean, I would expect that we'll run into a similar scenario down the road. Any questions, thoughts?
Lot of money.
No, but I think to Marie's point, I mean, you'd have to literally take some very big items off the CIP, which is going to have to be done to make this whole thing work. And it really shows that eight point three million evaporates pretty darn quick when you have, you know, different issues that happen within a town. The dams we've been pushing off for years. I know Chris and his guys are concerned about it. I don't know if we can do a portion of it. I'm sure they'll they'll do something in their presentation to figure out what we can kind of go through and everybody will be scrutinized on their their CIP as far as their request.
Again, for this two point three is for the, was it the crack pond dam? It is, it would be for the removal of it when, from what I understand, you have a higher success rate of getting a grant funding when you're removing a dam versus rehabbing it. So there is the potential for some grant money here. I don't know if it would cover the entire two point three million, but we'll just have to see. And then, I mean, this is really where those surplus revenues that we get from the stadium, this is where that money's going. You know, the money's not going into operating expenses, it's going into the these capital items, whereas other communities would have to go out and borrow money year after year to pay for their capital. We're fortunate enough that we have the free cash that we do to pay for that. And as you pointed out, Bill, I mean, eight point three million disappears like that.
And most communities don't have the benefit of this free cash. I mean, Foxborough is fortunate, you know, the schools are well equipped, the, you know, the facilities are well equipped, our vehicles. Like Bill said, when you, we start using, wearing them down and then to rebuild them, we all saw the old town hall and, you know, kind of where that ended up. So, you know, most communities aren't in a position that we are, but through strong financial management, you know, there really is good, sound financial practices that have been going on for for a long time. So it's hard to look at, but it's also, I wouldn't want to be doing another community's budget in this manner because it's, I live in Franklin, you know, and failed overrides and, I mean, they're looking at operating overrides and, and, you know, this capital has to defer a lot of times when you're dependent, when your finances are that tight.
Well, and also, also too, you know, sometimes, you know, we we hear about, we know, we know the town is is thrown into a tizzy on a football game or a concert or, you know, having Army Navy here. But with, you know, we've been bringing in close to around three million pretty steadily.
In recent years, yes, because you have, you know, ten to thirteen concerts.
Yeah.
So we, in our base projections, we include a full, a full year of football, a full year of soccer and about six to seven concerts.
So, so I get.
I mean, and again, when you're doing the budget.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
It's a year in advance. You have no idea if they have one.
You don't know what's what's coming in. But, I mean, it just, I mean, it goes to show you too that, you know, just sometimes it it's worth a little bit of chaos to then be able to use, you know, if we're carrying, like, like for this year, eight million, you know, three million of that is maybe, maybe coming from things going on at the stadium. And I guess you could turn that around a little bit and say some of the.
We we project about half of that three million.
Oh, okay, okay. Right. But some of, some of the things that go on up there cause us to have to spend some of that money that if, you know.
Yeah, well, we're really benefiting from is the the interest earnings. And those are, we project, I think our budget is about eighty five thousand for interest income. I mean, that's where it's been for years and these last couple of years. I mean, last year alone, we collected a one point two million dollars above that. But those rates are starting to come back down.
Dropping back down again, yeah. I was gonna say, we've, we've only had a couple of years of success with the fact, but it was the fact that all rates went up. So that's when your home mortgage rates go up and everything of that nature, then obviously the interests that they're going, banks are going to be willing to pay on it go up. When that started to happen, obviously, in the first year especially, nobody could predict how much the rate would change. Now we've got to watch it to the opposite side. How how fast is it going to drop down? So you could never use a one point two million dollar number in your budget for next year. We would potentially get cremated here, especially with the rates dropping, so.
And the other challenge we're facing is the loss of the revolution. You know, Marie's able to use that in our recurring expenses, not one time. And when they leave, what the past couple of years has been over nine hundred thousand dollars. So and, you know, I said, Marie, we have time. But she pointed out that you have to taper too. We can't just say, you know, oh, you know, whatever year it is, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, just cut a million. So we have to figure out how to taper that. So, but that is a reality because that's coming out of our recurring expenses. And then the concerts that may backfill it go back into, you know, one time. So that's a loss right there of of operating budget, basically, that we're coming up against.
Any other questions? Anybody have anything for Marie?
Thank you very much.
That was a great presentation. Good job.
Yes, it absolutely was. Thank you.
If I'm still around.
Over and over and over again, it's still not fully understood.
Free cash is not free cash.
It is not.
I think it took me, I think finally my third year on AdCom, I was starting to get it, you know? It's, it's, it's not easy. There's a lot, lot that goes into it. Thank you so much. I know that a lot of work.
If I'm still here, I'll see you guys on the twenty first to present the budget.
Good luck.
She's hoping not, right? Your due date's what, the eighteen?
Eighteenth, yes.
I went three days late twice, so she could be here going into labor.
I hope not.
That would be something.
Okay. We're shuffling, I know, shuffling everything around all of a sudden like, okay, where, where are we?
I think it's up to me now.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So Foxborough is being recognized with an award for the third place in category two, so that represents population of fifteen thousand to thirty thousand for MMA's annual town report contest. And that town report was prepared by none other than Katie Lang as a side job. As you recall, that's not really part of her job, but she did it on the side for us. And so kudos to Katie. The town will be presented with that award at the end of January at the MMA conference and have invited Katie to come in and get to stand up and be recognized, which, as you can imagine, she just loves.
Loves.
I know, she loves the attention. Speaking of MMA, both Moore and I will be speaking at that conference, two separate sessions. So we will be quite active at MMA this year. At sixty one Granite Street, I just want to raise this that we did receive an email about that, that there's some potential flooding associated with beaver activity on town-owned conservation land. The Conservation Commission will be discussing it at their meeting on Monday night, but just wanted to bring it as a heads up that it's something that's been percolating figuratively and literally. So I just wanted, certainly don't want to think about what that would do to capital if that does become our problem, but just it has been brought to our attention that it might be a concern moving forward and Conservation Commission is going to be taking a look at that.
It's flooding our lands, not flooding neighbor's.
No, it's flooding sixty one Granite Street. Yeah, and they've, they've raised concern several times. So we are looking at it now. Skip Jack's Restaurant at Patriot Place is closed. So after sixteen years of operation, yeah, so there is a new business plan to come in. I'll let them make that announcement, but obviously a great loss to Patriot Place. It's one of their original restaurant partners and I know all of us enjoyed dining there. I've mentioned this before, but I want to continue to mention it because I know there's so much interest, that Walnut Knoll, the the affordable housing project out on Walnut Street, they're having an informational session on January twenty ninth at two P M, the Council on Aging. And the Council on Aging does ask that folks register just so they can keep track of who's coming and if there is any sort of postponement due to weather or whatnot that they could reach, be reached. And as you know, the first building is estimated to open in September of this year now. I can't believe we're actually twenty twenty five. And they're hoping for the second building in December, so they are ahead of schedule. January's newsletter is scheduled to come out on January tenth, so I believe that's, yes, this Friday, so at the end of this week. Town Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day on January twentieth. And the official notice is now being given that annual town meeting warrant is open and it'll be open until February fourteenth and Katie's notifying departments of that. AdCom begins their budget meetings on January twenty ninth and they're going to run through Wednesday night, run through February on Wednesday nights. Just a reminder, those on, are not televised, so folks need to come in person, but they are very valuable to get an understanding of the votes that'll be occurring at town meeting. And the CIP meeting is scheduled for Saturday, March first, and that's held on Zoom in the morning. For current open positions, I think you all got my email about Paige Appolito. As you can imagine, we're not happy about that, but, you know, it's good for Paige. She's relocating to Dennis and there are a variety of factors that went into it, nothing to do with us. I know she's sad to leave us, but, so she's working with us through February sixth and with the, that job posting is up and we will be looking for a new candidate. We still have the Assistant Director of Public Works slash Town Engineer position open. We also have a Building Custodian for the Council on Aging and Human Services, that's part time, a Recreation Coordinator, which is part time, and then the three that we always have, DPW Equipment Mechanic, DPW Labor Driver and DPW Water Technician. And that's all I have for tonight. Yes.
Is Paige going to a position in Dennis?
She is.
What position?
Human Resources Director.
Yeah.
Well, I think she, I think it's a loss for, loss for us, but we wish her good luck in her new endeavor. Okay, all right, Select Board update. Don't really have anything, a little under old business. Katie had said Chris, Crisp, Laced is close to being, getting their their liquor stuff together. And I see people on on Facebook and they're questioning, I guess I saw someone say, say something like, well, how come the town does not issue them their liquor license and stuff? So they're close, you know, they're, they're doing a pretty, seems like they're doing a pretty good business with takeout, so people are excited for that. So that's a little update for them.
I did issue their license yesterday, so it's just.
Good for them.
A TBD and also Augusta Subs and Salads, their beer and wine lances was approved yesterday as well, so these should be rolling out their their grand opening for each.
Good, excellent. Anybody else have any Select Board news they want to share?
I can give a quick one on the DPW.
That'd be great.
Which has been moving along. We had a meeting this morning, excuse me. The foundations basically are all in at this point in time. They're working on rehabbing the older part of the building with new sprinkler systems, which it wasn't sprinkled before. And so with the foundations in, at least we're not quite as weather dependent. Biggest outstanding issue, excuse me, biggest outstanding issue is the the metal building unfortunately is, does not seem to be making the timeline that we had originally thought it was going to be on. So the project may get delayed by a few weeks, maybe as many as six weeks, depending on if that part of the package can get done quicker than it currently is projected at. So, but the site seems to be moving along pretty well and, you know, the weather, obviously we're past a point where we'd want to be putting in foundations, so fortunately those are done, so.
Bill, can you remind us what was, what is the date that we thought would be?
It was originally going to be early October. Now it looks like it could be as as far out as the first week of December, so.
That's a big product.
Yeah, and quite honestly, that would be, to be substantially complete, which means we would be more than likely in parts of the building before that anyway. And the site will be completed before that. So it's, it's really the, 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 the whole schedule is really based on the production of that metal package building, so.
I did want to mention that the North Hospital weekly meetings are going to restart this this Friday.
Yeah, I saw, I saw, saw the email about it. It was like right, right after, again, like even the email was coming, but then they weren't doing it. And so I was, I was hoping. So then at our next meeting, we'll put, we'll put down for a little update.
Right, right.
From you with what's going on.
And the pressure on the governor is increasing to do something a lot more quickly.
You can see that Paige had that on her list of things as far as dealing with the representatives, so.
Yes, and by way of update, unfortunately, the auditorium slash state hospital project at the state, at the legislative level, level did not pass during the last session. From what I hear, it got bundled with a couple other land projects and those got bogged down in, I believe, politics. I mean, that's my take on it, nothing to do with Foxborough. I believe Senator Feeney believes, you know, we don't need to refile and it will go through again, but, you know, it was a great loss. We were in communication right up till December thirty first, but it's hard to get things through. And I don't, it had nothing to do with our project, from what I understand. It had to do with politics associated with the other projects it was bundled with. So it's unfortunate because we were really hoping Dennis, you know, to get that project going sooner rather than later. So hopefully, you know, Senator Feeney and Michael Chason could, can usher this through in fast order to get this project going before we lose too much time.
Anybody else have anything? I guess we could take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, do, and do you want to note that?
You're going into executive.
You're going to go into executive session and we will not return?
Yes, we, we will be going to into executive session and not to return from there.
You have to say what?
We're going in to, to talk about Gillette Bridge, a footbridge with, with department heads and people from, from the town to talk about that. And there will be, there's no, is there no vote going on tonight, is there? Would we have to come back into, into regular session?
No.
And then have, okay. All right, now we can take the motion again.
I think you should read the actual.
Actual thing. I agree. Ten oh one.
Yep.
Ten oh one. I got it if you want me to read it.
Yes, please.
Discussion. Discussion, we're going, we're going to be going into executive session for the discussion of the acquisition and/or conveyance of land or easements therein per GL 30AS 21-6 associated with a prospective pedestrian bridge over Route 1 in the vicinity of Foxborough Stadium.
Second.
You do, under discussion, thank you.
Easy for you to say.
It was a lot of big words.
Do we have an executive session meeting? Say it one more time, Debbie.
Give a motion. Approve the second.
No, that's in the, that's in the.
Oh, okay, yep, a motion to adjourn.
No, no, we got a vote.
Oh, we're doing Doc's motion, yes.
Go into executive session, then we'll adjourn.
Exactly. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we roll call that? Executive session?
Yes.
Probably, yeah. Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
We'll give a minute for Mr. Beck.
Motion to adjourn, regular session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.